Are you ready Fernando? I'd like to call the regular meetings of the Public Finance Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successors, Successor Agency and City Council order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Zamora.
Here.
And Leah Rounds.
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Thank you. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on closed session items only. For those that are here to make a public comment, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers, mayor.
Public comments are now closed. Closed session. I'd like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session item.
My name is Rick.
Item one, closed session. Conference with real property negotiators. Pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property assessor parcel number 8001-003-934. Agency negotiator Renee Baudia, City Manager and Kwong Nguyen, Director of Community Development. Negotiating parties Jamburi Housing Corp., under negotiation, price and terms. You can take number two sir.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, member of the City Council. At this time, the City Council will recess into closed session to discuss the two items posted on today's agenda. The first one is conference with real property negotiators and the second is anticipated litigation, one matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now recess to closed session. We will reconvene the meeting after the closed session discussion to hear a report from the city attorney and to continue the rest of the meeting.
I got a mess here.
At this time, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. City Attorney, is there any closed sessions items to report?
Yes, Mayor, there's two closed session items that I'd like to report on. The first item, conference with rail property negotiators. The city council received a briefing from the city manager and staff on this item. Feedback was provided, but no final action was taken in closed session. With respect to item number two, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation one matter. The city council received a briefing from city staff. Direction was given, but no final action was taken on this item. Also, I'd like to, Mayor and city manager and council, I'd like to apologize for being 15 minutes late. But Joe Angel told me the meeting started at 5:30, so I apologize.
There you go. Full disclosure, right? At this time, I'd like to call upon Councilmember Juanita Martin to lead us in today's invocation.
Please stand. Follow your heads. Our heavenly Father, we give thanks tonight for the privilege of meeting together to deliberate on matters affecting our city. We ask for your guidance in our efforts to work for the betterment of our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. We also, we have the youth leadership committee tonight to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies, please introduce yourself and let us know what school you go to.
Hi, my name is Valerie Gamboa and I go to Santa Fe High School.
Hi, my name is Angelica Gamboa and I go to Santa Fe High School as well.
Thank you, ladies. Tonight, we don't have anybody from the Chamber of Commerce in attendance. Next, we have presentations. Whittier Police Department Crime Stats Report. I'd like to call on Captain Aaron Reese to give us that report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I come before you this evening to kind of give you an update on what public safety looked like in Santa Fe Springs in 2024. I'll just first start by stating that it's an absolute pleasure to serve in Santa Fe Springs. With me this evening, I brought some backup in case things get too crazy in this chamber. But I just want to just thank Arlene and her staff, working with them collaboratively in this past year. And we're looking forward to a productive 2025. 2024 continued to be a very busy year for law enforcement. Our dispatch center handled approximately over 200,000 calls for service actually came into our dispatch center. Of those 200,000 calls for service, approximately 18,000 translated into calls for service specifically in Santa Fe Springs, which prompted a response either by a police officer or a public safety officer from Santa Fe Springs. We responded to various calls for service, most of them, I would say, and I'll get into that in the slide that continues here. For thefts, the number one call for service in Santa Fe Springs was burglar alarm calls. Obviously, we have a large business component here in Santa Fe Springs. So that's the number one call for service in Santa Fe Springs. Number two is homeless calls. We see that consistently both in Whittier and Santa Fe Springs. Just the homeless population is a big driver of our resources and our calls for service. And then unknown disturbances is really the number three call for service that we've seen in Santa Fe Springs. Officers are kind of responding to a call. They really don't know what is going on, but it's a disturbance of some sort, which kind of, you know, you never know what you're walking into as a patrol officer. Of those 18,000 calls for service, we made approximately 1,500 arrests, a little over 1,500 arrests. Most of those were for narcotic offenses and theft-related crimes in Santa Fe Springs, as well as people wanted on outstanding warrants. I always like to talk about how we're doing in our response times. Obviously, when members of the public call us, we expect to get there in an expeditious manner. The national average for emergency response calls, I think law enforcement wants to get there between five to seven minutes. We were under that timeframe, at approximately four minutes and 47 seconds. So that's a really good response time here in Santa Fe Springs. The average non-emergency response time in Santa Fe Springs was 14 minutes and 25 seconds. I will say that we know that there's an expectation when members of the public call that we get there as quickly as we can. We never delay our response intentionally. Sometimes there's other factors that may, I guess, allow or give us a longer response time to a call for service. So we may be handling another emergency call. Our resources may be tied up on an incident. So I would just say that if you talk to your constituents or people who are voicing concerns about a response time on a certain call for service, that they call us and just, you know, get a status. Hey, you know, I called the police 15, 20 minutes ago. Can you kind of tell us what's going on? They may explain, the dispatcher may then explain that we're handling a traffic collision or our resources are tied up on, you know, a domestic violence incident, or there's going to be some sort of explanation. But by and large, we did an excellent job of responding to emergency calls for service this past year. I want to talk about just the types of crimes that we saw in Santa Fe Springs. We're required to report eight major categories to the federal government. You see them listed on this graph above. Homicide rate, robbery, assaults, burglary, thefts, grand theft autos or GTAs, and arson. Crime was up a little bit in Santa Fe Springs this past year. It was actually down from 2022, but up from 2023. So we responded, or we took approximately 100 more crime reports in Santa Fe Springs in these categories that you see listed here. I will say that there wasn't a lot of violent crime in Santa Fe Springs in 2024. Most of our crime is property crime-driven. So again, we have a lot of businesses, a lot of parking lots that are unmonitored overnight. So people stealing gas out of vehicles, cutting catalytic converters, those are all theft-related incidents that are going to be documented in this graph here. We have big box stores, both Target and Walmart. If you watch the news, you've actually seen retail theft. It's a problem all over the state. And there's many factors that I don't really have time to go into right now, but, you know, with zero bail in 2024, which basically we would take people into custody, arrest them, but the court systems would mandate that we then release them because of overcrowding. So the people that we're basically offending in those offenses are what we call career criminals. A lot of people know that there are minimal consequences, so they reoffend. And I think as a result of that, we saw just crime across LA County in the state kind of just rise as well as far as theft-related crimes. But by and large, violent crime was down in the city, which is a good thing. You might look at the graph and say, well, what about robberies? I see that those were up 89%. I will kind of give you some explanation on that in that a lot of the shoplifting offenses that you see, like at our big box stores, when people are confronted by loss prevention and they refuse to give up or give up their property, and they either threaten the person verbally, say, hey, don't come any closer, I'm going to strike you, or I'm going to hit you, or they push somebody away, that elevates that crime category to a robbery. So when you hear robbery, a lot of people think, well, that's with a knife or a gun and taking property. That's not necessarily the case. By definition, it's taking property through force or fear. So if I merely make a statement or do an action where I put my hand in my pocket, simulating that I have a weapon, and we take that report and that's articulated, that crime classification goes to a robbery. So that's, in looking at the number there, the 68, about 75% of those were like shoplifts that became elevated to a robbery classification. I want to talk a moment about traffic. It's another big concern in all communities, and we take traffic extremely serious in Santa Fe Springs. And I know that you all take it very serious as well because you have allocated resources over the last couple of years, actually several years, to add additional traffic enforcement throughout the city. Some of our problematic location, our major intersections around our schools, in our residential areas. Injury traffic collisions were actually down 5%. Again, a good thing. We put locations out to our patrol officers monthly. We call them T-LOX or traffic enforcement locations, where either members of the public, business, community members, or statistical data has told us that these are the problematic areas that we need to be spending our time writing citations or giving warnings or just being visible. So we have found that to be very effective. I think the fact that we had less injury traffic collisions is a good sign in that effect. I know that adding a traffic officer has been a priority for you all. And we're hoping with our staffing picture for 2025 that we may be able to add an additional traffic officer later this year. So we're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed that everybody stays healthy. We don't get too many retirements, which have kind of, we've been in rebuilding mode since the riots, just trying to get our patrol force rebuilt. But I think we have, I think, nine people on training right now. We have four people in the academy. We just hired two lateral officers that started this week. The staffing picture is, I think, turning around. And we hope to add some of those additional bodies that you have all been asking for in this next year. I want to transition real quick to technology that we have utilized in Santa Fe Springs over the last couple of years. And again, many of you sitting on this dais have authorized the purchase of a lot of these technology items that I'll be talking about. Automatic license plate reader cameras, we have those situated throughout the city. These cameras read thousands of license plates as we drive through communities all over the state of California, for that matter. And it really is a force multiplier because we are able to just look for vehicles. I have some investigators here standing to my left, and I'm sure they can tell you how valuable these cameras are when they're looking for people that have committed crimes, not only in our jurisdiction, but in other jurisdictions. And when we're trying to track people down, these just give us invaluable information. Since 2022, we had 30 cameras in the city. We're getting ready to add, I believe, 11 more, which is just going to give us greater coverage within Santa Fe Springs. When I talk to my counterparts in other cities, they're amazed at the number of cameras that we have here in Santa Fe Springs. So that's a testament to your commitment to public safety, and we all thank you for that. With these cameras, we've been able to arrest numerous individuals who have committed crimes in Santa Fe Springs, Whittier, other communities. We've been able to return stolen vehicles to victims. We have caught murderers driving through cities where people have put, you know, license plates in, wanting in connection with a homicide, whatever the case. It's just been an invaluable tool. So thank you for your commitment in the technology.
Captain, I may, I think we had a situation over this past week where we had what we thought a sign stolen from our parking lot. And we had video footage of
I have a detective here that solved that for us, so.
And we couldn't really read the license plate. It was a little grainy. And they went to our license plate readers, and we were able to pick up that truck at three different locations and identify the truck, the license plate, and who owned it. We were able to solve the caper that it really wasn't stolen. But the license plate readers pretty quickly allowed us to find out who that was, which
Yeah, most definitely. I mean, that's just thankfully, it wasn't a crime, but that's just an example of how invaluable these types of cameras and this technology is. So, yeah, thank you. That was a tactical alert. I want to talk real quick about patrol drones. If you were at our national night out here in Santa Fe Springs, you saw our drone demonstration. But this is just an exceptional tool that we utilize really daily. I'm on a string and, you know, I'll get an alert that a drone is up, a drone is up. And it's, I will say that these are being used so often now. You have some pictures here of a team, I believe that's searching, the lower left corner, searching a large commercial property. And we can use And we can use these in the interior of warehouses. We can use them in residences ahead of our SWAT team before we put somebody in there where we need to kind of, you know, check on something, see if somebody's hiding behind a door, barricaded in the bathroom, whatever the case may be. They're just an invaluable tool. We use them up and down the railroads, the flood control properties. They're just provide situational awareness just for critical incidents and just in so much. We can fly these when there's bad weather, when the sheriff's helicopter says, hey, we can't get up or we're refueling. Officers have these in their, we have, I think, fifteen drone operators currently. We're about to add, I believe, five more. But we have officers on patrol that have these in the back of their patrol units. And when they're on a critical incident, they can simply get these out and get them out flying rather quickly. A quick story, we had a robbery that actually occurred here in Santa Fe Springs at Telegraph in Oranay, at the Jack-in-the-Box area there. Two individuals who threatened somebody took off and went into a residential area just south of here. The officer was able to get on scene rather quickly. Patrol set up a nice, tight perimeter, and we felt that we had this person locked in. A drone went up and we found this person in the backyard of a residence. Actually, both individuals trying to hide, one on top of a wall and one like tucked in a corner of a backyard. Had we not had that, we may have been, you know, doing a yard search and these people may have gotten away. But fortunately, we got them into custody and now they're in LA County Jail serving their time. So just an invaluable piece. But again, it was funding that you all allocated for us to purchase these and these have been an invaluable resource for us. I want to talk real quick about Axon. It's a company that manufactures our tasers and our body-worn cameras that we went to recently. There's going to be a budgetary item that's going to be coming to you in your study sessions that you all have to take a look at. But our tasers are kind of at their, I think we've had them for now ten years and they're kind of at the end of life. Axon, the company's no longer going to support these, so we're going to have to ask you all to support funding this. This is going to just be a better tool for us. It's excellent for de-escalation when we have to confront violent people and rather than resort to some other type of a tool or a firearm, for that matter. These can, when you have these trained on somebody and they make kind of a, the new ones make a sound, it is really a good tool to kind of get somebody to comply and just allow us to get them into handcuffs peacefully rather than having to resort to additional force. Same with the body-worn cameras. These are upgraded. We have had these for a couple of years now, but the new platform is going to require us to change our body-worn cameras. So that's going to be coming before you in some study sessions in the near future. Kind of wanted to close finally, just to kind of show you a map of Santa Fe Springs. We have a dedicated sergeant that manages an area of the city. In Area One, we have Sergeant Mike Rosario. So he has that area from Washington Boulevard roughly down to Telegraph. Area Two is Sergeant John King. He couldn't be here with us this evening, he's on vacation. But that's from Telegraph to Imperial, and then from Imperial to Alondra, we have Sergeant Jose Bolanos, who's actually on duty, but he's here this evening. So we have just greater ownership with a sergeant dedicated to a geographical area within the city, which just allows us to take on projects, find long-term solutions to issues that we're dealing with in Santa Fe Springs. So it's a really good model. And these people that we have working in Santa Fe Springs just do an excellent job for us. And that really concludes my presentation for this evening. Again, just wanted to say thank you all. I've known and worked with many of you for the last five years, along with City Manager Boba Dia. In 2020, when we were going through some rough times with the riots, a lot of cities around us were not supporting their police departments, were not funding their police departments. But you all on this dais supported law enforcement, public safety. I know you guys take it very seriously for the community. And, you know, we're up to the challenge, up to the task. And these individuals that I have here in this room from the Whittier Police Department that serves Santa Fe Springs, as well as the other staff that couldn't be here, who are either on duty or on their days off, enjoy working for you all, enjoy protecting you all. And along with Public Safety Officers, with Arlene's team, as well as the Department of Fire Rescue, it's just a great place to, as you say, live, work, and play. So thank you so much for having us. I'm happy to take any questions or comments, but thank you.
I know that we've probably allocated about over a million dollars when it comes to homelessness, you know, the putting in our staff, our policing and our fire. So where are we at with the tactical force that we're trying to create to help out, ease the load for all these officers?
We're working with our supervisor's office, Janice Hahn's office, and we're also hoping to bring that back to you at our studies sessions. And Arlene's been sending us reports on some of the work they're already doing. And I went out on a field trip today and they actually put their drone up in the air to see some of the encampments that are out there. And believe it or not, we have quite a few of them that you just can't see, but they're there. But they're doing an amazing job and they're gaining them little by little. If you drive by Florence or by Goodman site, that whole parking lot or what was to be a parking lot is completely empty now or before it was completely littered with encampments. So we're starting to really address it and we're addressing it with vigor and a lot of enthusiasm. So I'm excited, you know, Aaron, his team, and Arlene and the work they're doing. But during the budget study session, we'll comprehensively talk a little bit more about, you know, more funding, where that's going to come from and this team. Because it's not just about removing them, is, you know, how do we get them help and get them to where they need to be?
Yeah, because some of these calls that we get, I mean, you know, we talk about the zero bell, but also, I mean, some of these individuals, you know, they're found on one person's lawn. And then an hour later, you know, or whatever it may be, the fire department cops are called and then an hour later, they're on somebody else's lawn. And usually, it might be like four to five, you know, seven calls just that day on that same individual. And of course, they want no support and they want no help. So it makes it real difficult, you know, for these individuals to do their job. And I think that probably has a lot to do maybe with your response time. I mean, if you guys didn't have to focus on that, I mean, I know it sounds harsh that, you know, but, you know, you guys are here to serve and protect. So, I mean, I thank you for the job that you guys are doing. Another question is license plate reader cameras. If there's ever any other technology that you guys see, if you guys see that it may be fit in certain areas that you guys are roaming around or policing in our cities, let us know so we can buy more, purchase more. Because I know, you know, everybody's up here, they're our models, you know, to defend, not defund. You know what I mean? So it makes it easier just to make, you know, that we do our part to show our support for you guys. So, I mean, I just can't thank you guys enough, you know. And may God always bless all you guys. You know, thank you for the work that you guys commit to this city. And, you know, not only in our city, but the city of Whittier, of course. But thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, officers, sorry for your loss for one of your brothers in another department. It hits home. So please, we want you to come home every day. This is just a job. Please come home every night to your families. We would be hypocrites up here if we didn't say we don't want to support you. Because each one, like Mayor Protem said, we support you, but we don't want to be hypocrite. So please, exactly what Mayor Protem said, if you have anything that you guys need, lack of, we're here to support you guys every day. Because not anybody could do what you guys do for us. You guys do it every day in and out. I mean, each one of you guys have at least ten years or, I mean, you guys, there's the younger one there, but you will be here. That's you, that's you, Sanchez, that's you. But please know, like I said, we are probably the hardest on you. You probably get a lot of, you know, a lot of crap from your captain and your chief, but you probably get a lot from us, but because of the, but what we want for our residents. But please know, though, it's, we do it out of love for our city, but we want the best. And you guys are the best here. So please always know we support you. We want you to come home every night to your family. And anything you guys need, we're here for you. And you guys are in our prayers every day. So thank you so much.
The same here. I just wanted to say thank you for all your service that you do. It's not an easy job. People are out there to attack you and other people are out there and they love you. They love what you do. There's nobody that should attack you. You're out there to serve the community and to help us all. And we're just so proud of you for everything that you've done for us. Just all of you that have helped in Santa Fe Springs. I don't have anything bad to say. I mean, I've called myself, just about little things, allow somebody at two in the morning having a party and we really need to get to sleep. You're there, you help, you talk to the, it's not me partying. It's other people, but you're there. You go over there, you tell them, and you get along with everybody. You have smiles on your face. Back in the day, people were scared of the police officers. Now, you know, you're human too. They, people have to understand. You have families and you have a mom and a dad and kids and spouses. So you're human too and people look beyond the badge and make sure that they are respectful to you. So I can't thank you enough for everything that you do for our community, for Whittier, for Santa Fe Springs, and just for everybody in general. So just please know that we're rooting for you and there's just no way that we would ever think about defunding our police officers. Thank you very much for being here.
Real quick, Mrs. Rosario, you got two kids that are, two sons are in. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's two of them here. How do you do? I mean, commend you as a mother, a lot of prayers. So commend moms, too.
I wanted to introduce my staff here unless there's any other comments.
Just a couple more.
Okay, no problem.
We all want to take our turn, sir.
Yeah, no, but it's already been said. And a lot of the police officers that I speak to, they do incredible things. And it's the same thing, well, it's our job, it's a job, it's just a job. Well, like it's been stated up here before, not everybody could do what you guys do. And you probably don't see it that way, but it's incredible what you do. And back in the day, 2021, when the big movement was defund the police and everybody that was on council at that time, there was no way we would ever do that. And anything that you guys need, you know, for your protection to help protect us, you know, let's get that done. Those tasers, do you only shoot one time or do you have multiple ones?
The tasers?
Yeah.
So the old-
They only say they just shoot one time. You got like a six-shooter taser or something?
Any volunteers? We do have two taser cartridges that we have. However, the new ones actually have, I believe it's ten. So it gives us a greater option because these are kind of limited in what they can do. So that's, again, part of the revamping of the tool that will be really welcomed by officers.
Thank you, officers, for all you do. Appreciate it.
Aaron, thank you for the presentation. I know it's a lot of numbers and hopefully next year, everything will be in the black, you know.
That's our goal.
Turn it around, the purple. But, and hopefully with the new DA, those are going to turn around. So we keep our prayers and thoughts about that. And again, you know, I think all of us, all of you know that about a month ago, Whittier PD officers were honored, Silver Shields. And we attended to that and it was a great presentation. And well, well, I mean, you could have honored everybody in the room, but they selected a few of them. But thank you again for everything you guys do, girls, everything you do, and especially you, sir.
Thank you. So I just want to introduce my, the staff that I have here today. So I have Detective Sergeant Carlos Arroyo. Sergeant Jose Bolanos, who's actually on duty. Detective Angel Garcia De Alba. Detective Samim Safazada. Detective Corporal Paul Garcia. Detective Angelo Balzano. Our motor officer Fernando Sanchez. And hopefully, he hasn't had to introduce himself to anybody in this room personally. To close out this evening, I wanted to call Sergeant Mike Rosario up to the front, if you could. So Sergeant Mike Rosario, I believe he grew up in Santa Fe Springs. I talked to him briefly today. He said he's had, I think, two jobs, or is this your third job? So he's had three jobs in his career. He first started as a junior lifeguard, where he, I think, was a student of Councilmember John Mora and actually learned CPR. You're going to see kind of where this goes here in a moment. And then he eventually took a job as a PSO. And now he's a sergeant with the Whittier Police Department, which I will say that Santa Fe Springs has been a good, I guess, garden for us to cultivate because we have several people who have worked for Santa Fe Springs who are now police officers. We actually have an individual who's on training who was a former PSO. So we thank you. We're sorry that we took some of these individuals for you, from you, but we're pretty confident that they will return back home and serve you proudly here in Santa Fe Springs. But with that, I wanted to kind of transition briefly into just recognizing Sergeant Mike Rosario. We had the privilege of honoring him a couple of weeks ago, as Mayor Round said, at our Silver Shields Award, where he did something amazing. And I think it's worth sharing with the Santa Fe Springs community because a lot of people obviously couldn't be with us that evening. So I'm just going to read the bio or the statement that was prepared that kind of described the situation that he went into. And thank you, family, for being here to honor your dad and your son. So on April 30th, 2024, approximately 8:15 PM, Sergeant Rosario was dispatched to the 13900 block of Putnam Street regarding an adult male having a heart attack and not breathing. Sergeant Rosario quickly recognized this address as one belonging to his close family friends. Arriving on scene a short time later, Sergeant Rosario was confronted with the unthinkable. As he observed his close friend, off-duty California Highway Patrol Officer Cory Baker, not breathing and without a pulse. Sergeant Rosario sprung into action and immediately began to administer CPR until the paramedics arrived on scene and took over. Officer Cory Baker was transported to PIH where he received life-saving critical care. This was a highly stressful situation where despite a personal connection and high emotions, Sergeant Mike Rosario was able to remain focused, put his training into action, and remained determined to bring his friend back to life. With that, Sergeant Mike Rosario was awarded our Life Saving Award. He was also joined onstage with Cory Baker, his good friend, who actually survived that incident. He's now retired from the CHP, but owes a debt of gratitude for Sergeant Rosario and his heroic action on that day. He was not only honored by the Whittier Police Department, but he was also honored by the California Highway Patrol, which was really nice of them to show up and award him with the Life Saving Award with their agency as well. So like I said, there was a personal connection where, I believe, John Mora taught him CPR way back in the day and it kind of translated and carried over to his professional career. But thank you, Mike, for your dedication and your commitment to another member of our law enforcement family, so. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I just wanted to like close out again. We're approaching thirty years of service to the Santa Fe Springs community this October. And just thank you for your dedication, City Council, and your continued support.
Thank you, thank you. Mike, you're done yet? Come up here, please. So a little story about this gentleman. No, I'm not going to tell everything. But he and my sons were best friends in high school. And my oldest son, who is also in law enforcement, they went through the cadet program together, Explorer Program. And both, my son's in Huntington Beach, this guy here is in Whittier. But, you know, no, I'm not going to tell any more stories. So on behalf of the city of Santa Fe Springs, we want to give you this recognition, a certificate of recognition with everything that was said and done. You're an amazing man. I know you're an amazing father. And just thank you for what you did, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Can I just take one minute?
Sure.
Just really thank John for everything he's done for me.
I just, I really want to thank John for instilling, like, the importance of first aid and taking care of other people early on. My brother, who's a lieutenant with Downey PD, he is here. He saved a two-year-old baby who was drowning and wound up giving the baby CPR and the baby survived. And it all comes back to what John's done. And I just can't speak enough- And it all comes back to what John's done, and I just can't speak enough of John and what he's instilled in us early on. I was like 13 years old and in CPR. Every time you go through the retraining, it's just like retraining, but that first initial training really leaves an impact on you. And I remember John vividly saying, like, hey, you never know who it's going to help, and it saved one of my best friend's lives. Thank you.
So first, can we take a picture with you alone, and then we'll invite your family up? Okay?
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Okay.
And Mike, as they come up, please introduce who they are too, please.
I think we've all gotten CPR classes from John. I think I have.
Sure. Come on, Lieutenant.
So you get to pick since you were first, right?
So this is my mom, Armida.
My sister Sarah.
Giant step.
There you go.
All right, ready? And three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Mike, Mike, stay up here, because we're going to take a picture of you and the officer.
And also, Mike's mother was a 14-year employee of Santa Fe Springs too, so.
The, the other officer?
Yeah, he's going to. Okay, Mike, invite your, invite your partners up here.
Mother?
Come on.
You're in the middle, Mike, right in front of that clock. Yep.
You like how you can see?
Yeah. Good job, bro, I'm glad you're right there.
Good job, guys.
Good job. I'm happy. Yeah. Armida, where do you want to?
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Let's have another good tea, man.
Hi, hon, how you doing?
Sure.
Hey, I have to know you're going to do a training right now.
Okay, you know, really quick, I know, officers, you have to leave really quick, but Mike, Vince, Rosario family, please. Yeah, I've got multiple stories too regarding the Rosario brothers, but we're, we're not going to say too much because there's family and other officers here. But no, but seriously, one of the statistics that you see, CPR, it can be 10% effective or less. So the fact that both you with that little girl and you with your friend being at the, at that right time, and it's not only just doing CPR, but doing it the right way. Now, I like to say that, yeah, I took some part in this, but no, it was all you guys. You guys saved a life, and that's incredible. I remember back when they were junior guards, you know, junior guards were, it was a program, you know, it was a unpaid volunteer program, but sometimes they did a lot better than our current staff back then. So these guys were amazing, and they did not hesitate jumping into the pool to try to save somebody. They're, they're not really drawn, they just, get back over here, but their eye for public safety and willingness to help, you know, it just transcends. I mean, it's just here, so, gentlemen, I am so proud of you guys, really. Love you guys, your family, Armida, prayers for your, your family, that those boys come home every single night, and just God bless you guys, thank you so much.
Mr. Bovede, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we have no changes to the agenda.
Also, I'd like to have Mr. Bovede report out. He and I attended a mayor, city manager meeting today with Congresswoman Linda Sanchez, so, Renee?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I wish I had better news to report, but our meeting this year was not that great as far as information. The good news is Congresswoman Sanchez is the top Democrat in the Ways and Means Committee. That's, that's huge for us. She's, she represents us, and she's on a, a big committee in the nation. There's been a lot of changes to Washington DC staff. You, you're hearing about it, you're seeing it live. The federal government is changing, and there's not much they can do about it. We were fortunate to receive funding from Congresswoman Sanchez's office, and just to give you an idea, we received $850,000 for a project on Slosen. We received $2.2 million directly from her office for Waterwell Number 12. We received $2.5 million just this last year for Wi-Fi improvements throughout our city. And we also received money for Norwalk Boulevard, Los Nietos Great Separation Project, $2.64 million. So in this meeting, she informed us that the Norwalk project definitely will not be funded. The citywide Wi-Fi will definitely not be funded. And, and Mr. Enriquez, she also mentioned we better get in any, any reimbursements we need for 2022, 23 now before those go away. This bill, or this resolution that was approved by, by Congress last week, the CR version of it, so that they wouldn't have a shutdown, they approved it through the end of the year, but it does not have any wildfire funding. So our, our fire department does a lot of reimbursement work through the Cal Fire. That funding's in jeopardy, so if any, any agencies go out and help, like Pacific Palisades, or the Eden Fire, or any other fire throughout the state of California, those agencies would probably not be reimbursed. There is community project funding, that's how we get most of our funds through the Congresswoman's office. They have not been given direction. Typically, the party that is, in majority in this case, the Republican Party, has not given instructions of how to fund that, or if they're even going to fund any projects at all. There's discussion of an internal memo where they're talking about abolishing Social Security. And we're talking all, all the benefits is, is what, what, what she's telling us. They have a, a plan to break it down. She's saying that right now, the appointment time is about a month, so there's, there's already been cuts in that area. She talked about the tax debate, the SALT, where it affects state and local taxes, that that's something that they're, they're really trying to ensure they fix. It didn't, it didn't work. Surface transportation is in jeopardy as well. And if, if you're familiar with the, the federal highways, I-10, the I-605, those are federal highways. If those, if that funding goes away, that can affect funding for Caltrans and, and how those projects get, get funded. My question to her was, what's going to happen to local agencies if, if a lot of that funding that kind of trickles through Caltrans or Metro? Is the plan to have those highways go back to counties? And right now, the, the answer is, nobody knows. She did mention that there's a congressional art contest, April 4th is the deadline, so if any, any of our youth want to submit a, an art piece, you can submit it through her congressional office. The winner gets a full paid trip, hotel, airfare to Washington DC to be recognized. The other debate is Medicaid. Medicaid funds $880 billion of funding, and Medicaid pays things like adult care, living, and a lot of benefits our seniors get. If the $880 billion go away, it's a trickle-down effect, so people who use facilities or facilities that rely on that funding go away. You may, and mostly in urban areas, you'll start to see some of those hospitals close or facilities close. And she mentioned a term today that I had never heard, but it's called impoundment. And what that is, is what the government is saying now, is if, if there was any agreement for funding, if, if the government gave the cities or counties or states funding, that they're using the term impoundment to revoke all the funding that was given. So pretty much any project that hasn't started, and she did mention some projects that are completed that now will not be funded. She mentioned a project that was done, and they're not going to pay the contractor because they're saying the, the impoundment took place and we can't pay you. So there's, there's definitely a lot of changes. I think most folks in the room were very concerned about how it affects cities. I don't think most, most people in the room really cared much about the politics, we were more concerned about how it's going to affect our residents and our funding. There was a question about CDBG, they're really trying hard to save it. Norwalk, I believe, asked that question. She doesn't think it survives, but they're going to try to do their best to keep it. We talked a little about Army, about Army Corps, Pico Rivera specifically with their dam project. It doesn't look like it's going to get funded now. So they've done a lot of work to close parks, close a golf course. I was talking a bit with their city manager, and there, there's a funding gap, they're not sure they're going to get it, so that project's on hold, which also affects other neighboring communities as well. So there's still a lot to, to unwind, we'll see how it, how it fares. Our goal is obviously to ensure that whatever funding comes to us, we, we figure out strategic ways to continue funding programs with funds that we get from, from the federal side. And she did end with a joke, and I think it was funny, so I'll end with a joke. And she asked, what do you call a computer that sings? Adele.
Thank you for that, Renee. Public comments are now open. The public may address the city council on non, any non-public hearing item on the agenda or any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once a city clerk announces your name. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor. First, I'd like to call upon Jeremy Goldstein.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Goldstein with The Whole Child. First, I want to say thank you to this council, thank you to all city employees, and thank you to the residents of Santa Fe Springs for welcoming The Whole Child into your city, into your community. We are now up and running with our Safe Families Center at 10950 Laurel Avenue, at the corner of, corner of Laurel and Lakeland. We're open to the community, we're providing mental health services, family housing services, parent enrichment services, and nutrition services. And now that we're up and running, we are inviting everyone to a town hall meeting at Gus Velasco Center two nights from tonight at 5:00 PM, where we'll be answering your questions about the facility. We're also having our friends from Richmond Group, who are operating the 100 units of affordable housing on that site, and they'll be answering questions about how to lease those apartments. I have left flyers in the back, so please take them, we're looking forward to seeing you all there. And if you have any questions about the site, we'll be there answering those questions that evening. And if you aren't able to make it, it's just the first of many opportunities, we'll be providing material to all city offices so people know how to access the amenities and services at those sites. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I had a question. Yeah, I know that you have, you're going to have some seminars regarding how to lease the apartments at The Whole Child, but there's some residents that would like to rent one of the, the apartments, but they, they just can't get there, they have disabilities such as MS. Is there somebody that can go visit our residents that cannot get over there?
You mean they can't make it to the town hall on Thursday, or they can't make it to the?
Yeah, to, to fill out the applications, or, you know, is there applications that could be sent to our residents to make it easier for them, the, the seniors or residents that can't travel?
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe we're looking at getting city addresses so that we can send out a mailer to everybody, but the applications won't be available at the town hall. They are available, or rather, the, the waiting list for Richmond, that's the, the company that's leasing, leasing the apartments, is already open. The phone number is actually on our website at thewholechild.org. We have that available, and like I said, we'll be distributing material to all city offices so that anybody who calls can get that phone number and the website address. So there's, there's multiple ways to get on that waiting list right now.
Okay, because the waiting list, I'm not sure if the Santa Fe Springs residents have priority, so these are things that we needed to find out, because there's some people out there, our residents, that really need the help, and some of them don't have computers, or they're not, they're not tech savvy, so we need to think about that, so maybe we can, maybe you and I can get together after the meeting, you could give me your information, and we can be easy to do business with, for people that, that don't have computers, or don't know how to use the computers, or that don't have the stability to, to drive over there.
Absolutely, let's talk after the meeting, and I can give you what information I have. And then, like I said, even if people aren't able to attend the meeting with Richmond Group on Thursday, there's contact information so that we can make sure to get everybody in touch and on the same page. Those apartments are not open yet, just to be clear, they're just now. I believe the application goes online in something like three weeks, so towards the end of March, and I'm sure they'll be able to provide a way for people who aren't able to fill it out online.
Good, okay, thank you.
And Councilmember, if it's okay, I'm going to direct staff to put all that stuff on our social media, put it on our website, and get all that contact information out there, and then we'll also work with our staff. If folks need transportation, we can offer it through our services as well.
Not only the transportation, I, I think, you know, the help, because filling out an application, I mean, think about it, I don't know when you guys filled out any type of applications, whether it be for FASFIL or anything else, for financial aid, but even your own home applications, people get nervous. And, and so imagine needing the help, I mean, needing the support, well, we need somebody to actually, you know, handwrite it with them to, to take that down, so I think if our staff can go the extra mile of looking for some kind of service that not only drives them there, but also sends an advocate with them to, to, to go the whole mile and, and support them.
Perfect, thank you.
Next, Mayor, I'd like to call upon Lee Squire.
City clerk, just real quick, Lee talked to me a little bit before, he's got a really good presentation, he may run over the three minutes, okay? Okay.
It's Lee, come on.
I know.
Lee Squire, Vietnam era veteran, US Army, death before dishonor, mayor and city council. To we the people of the city of Santa Fe Springs, to the Vietnam veterans, to their families and their friends, subject, welcome home. National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29th, 2025, marks the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. Death before dishonor. I shall die before I bring dishonor upon America and my military, its veterans, and its families. We swore that we would be the voice for those, we would be the voice for we who survived, we would be the voice of those who did not return Vietnam. 58,479 brothers and sisters never returned from Vietnam. I now plan to honor three mayors. Oneida Martin, Mayor Oneida Martin, and POW MIA flags. Under your mayorship, you brought upon us the honor of the POW MIA flags that are now flying at the city hall and our veterans memorial. Jay Sarno, he was the mayor when Santa Fe Springs became a metal heart, a Purple Heart Metal City. To Mayor Rounds, we now present to you the picture of "It is the soldier, and it has direct ties to the Vietnam War." I'm asking for you to read it upon the completion of my public comments. Roses for each, one of you council members, I'm asking that you place on each of the military branches at the veterans memorial right outside the city hall. Vietnam War was five branches, five council members, five roses. God bless the nation of Israel, God bless America, and God bless my military, its veterans, and its families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. So Lee presented this, this is the soldier, and as requested, I'll read it right now. "It is a soldier, not the minister, who has given us freedom of religion. It is a soldier, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press. It is a soldier, not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech. It is a soldier, not the campus organizer, who has given us freedom to protest. It is a soldier, not the lawyer, who has given us the right to a fair trial. It is a soldier, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote. It is the soldier who salutes a flag, who serves beneath the flag, and whose coffin is draped by the flag, who allows the protester to burn the flag. Charles M. Providence." Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
I have a question, I'm wondering if, you know, on, what is it, March 29?
March 29th, 2025, yes. March 29, 2025, yes.
If we can actually post this on our website, if that is something we can do in honor of, you know, Vietnam vets, you know, and anything we can do to share this with, you know, our community, our killed.
Of course. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, once again. Any more comments, sir?
That concludes our speakers, Mayor.
At this time, I'll close public comments and move on to the next item. Staff communication. Mr. Bobbadea, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up Manisela Valdés, our community services director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, audience. So I wanted to invite everybody to our Chalk It Out event, which is going to take place this Saturday, on March 22, at Town Center Plaza, and it's going to be from 9:00 to 12:00. The event's going to feature two live chalk artist demonstrations. We already have over 50 kids registered, and we still are taking registrations. And then the winners of the Chalk It Out are going to be awarded some chalk supplies, and they're also going to be featured at the 10th Annual Art Fest on April 26. It's going to take place at Heritage Park. And then the event's a family-friendly event, and it's going to include the library's pop-up play area, crafts, face painting, balloon artists, a DJ, and two food vendors. I don't know if the food vendors are providing healthy food, but we'll see. Anyway, we hope to see everybody there, and so we can support our youth and our art in the community. Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing. Ordinance Number 1155, amendments to the municipal code regarding billboards along the 605 freeway. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobbadea.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is ordinance number 1155, as you mentioned, and this is to install billboards along the 605 corridor. The staff report is attached for your consideration, and we ask that you receive any comments from the public and determine that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA and introduced by title only, and wait for the reading of ordinance number 1155. And we are here for any questions.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to be heard, please approach the podium and state your name. City clerk, do we have any speakers?
No speakers, Mayor.
I'd like to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion of approval of item number four?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next, regular business. Fiscal year 2023-24, year-end review and financial report. I'd like to call upon city manager, Mr. Bobbadea.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, if you're a financial nerd, this is the best report of the year. This report for members of the public and the council is probably the most important document that we will produce. It provides you an audited review of how we ended the 23-24 fiscal year. It has some very good information. If you're tired at night, need something to put you to sleep, take this document out. It has some really great information of how we did. And I'll let Lana, I won't take her thunder, but Lana will present to us how we did this last fiscal year.
Thank you, sir. Good evenings, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and council members, and member of the audience. The city manager inspired me to, he told a joke before he, after he ended his communications. I'll start with one. Who do you call an accountant with an opinions? An auditor.
Everybody's got jokes.
So before you is the fiscal year 23-24's annual comprehensive financial statements that conducted by independent auditors. Clifton's lessons, Larson's, Allen's, was referred to CLA as short. This year, I'm happy to report that we received unmodified opinions. Basically, the auditor conclude that our financial statement is fairly presented. At the beginning of the process, they came and communicated with the city councils as far as the process of how the audits going to go. In July, they come in for an interim. What they normally do during the interim fieldwork is talk to the staff to ensure that we, and make an assessment to ensure that the cities, the cities had internal controls to ensure that we mitigate any areas of fraud. Which is, there's a report that attached with the agenda report for internal control. During October, they came back to gather evidence to form an opinions. In March, they finalized the audit report. So that is final communication to the city council as far as the result of the audit. And there's also, I also want to point out that there's a channel between the auditors and the city council. If you would like to communicate with them directly, you have that options as well. There's our general fund summaries. So revenue came in much higher than our actuals, at 109 millions. Our expenditure, actual expenditure was lower than we anticipated. That brought us to a net increased fund balance of 16 millions, and our operating reserve increased from 33 million to 50 millions. A general fund's revenues enlarge with major category. Sale tax, sale tax is a little bit more than 50% of total revenues. Sale tax consists of Bradley Burn and our transaction tax that approved by the city council in 2018. On top of that, we also received utility user tax, property tax, charge for services, and other revenues. This year, the other revenue categories are a little bit larger, mainly because we received 7 millions of interest earning on a portfolio. And just note that that is just for 23-24. It could be some, it could be different next year. But last year, our city managers took actions on investing it with a new portfolio managers, and they have been actively invest our funding. On your right, you see the major industry group of our sales tax. Business and industries is, consists of 51% of the total sale tax that we receive. The county pools allocation have increased significantly over the past year. It consists of 7 million, which is 12% of the total sale tax. Building and construction, 12%, 6 millions, and there's a couple more categories down there. We don't receive a lot from the staple. General fund expenditures, there is allocations of our expenditures, how we spend them. You can see that safety, we exceed 50% of total expenditures. Public work, 18%, finance, 10%, community service, 7%, generals, government, including, including city managers and councils expenditures, that is 6%, between 5% and 6%. And we have power and recs, 5%, and community developments, 4%. Across the board, we have realized savings from all departments, mainly due to the vacancy savings. A vacancy saving consists of 1.4 million, contractual service, 2.3 million of savings. Intergovernmental charge mainly realized from the PD Vedas contracts that we have vacancies at the end of the year. And there's one-time expenditures. Last year, we budgeted, but we realized 1.7 million of savings. Just bring back what we brought to the city council last meetings is our year-end reserve. We didn't change the number. We still have 50% of our reserve, operating expenditures reserve. Risk management, 900,000, unexpected events, 1 million, economic contingency, 11.7 million, renovation replacement, 250, vehicle equipment replacement, 9.2 million, pension trust fund, 26 million, leave and related payout, 7.4 million, capital improvement projects, 37 million, water enterprise fund reserve, 8.3 million. So with all these reserves, it allowed the city council moving forward to be able to be flexible on the funding and surplus to be able to do something else. Unfunded liabilities, last year, as of 2022, because of the economy downturn, it added additional 41 million on a liability. And 2023, which is the year prior to, the year prior to the current audit years, it add additional 8 million on top of a liability. Currently, we're standing with 153 million dollar of liabilities, just on realized pensions alone. There is a quick pictures for long-term liability. General fund doesn't have any bond-related, debt service-related liability. We have 4.2 million of the financings with the Vedas vehicles and lease payable. Water fund had two outstanding bonds accounted for, that is 7.3 million. On your, on your right, you see that by 2043, we should be able to pay it off. Water funds, not a fan of this, but as you can see that, based on the accounting standard, everything that happened at the end of year, even though, it happened after the fiscal year-end, but it belonged to the previous year, we have to record it. Based on the audit report, it reported 1.5 million dollar of surplus. But on a cash bay, we need to take into consideration that a revenue of 16.9 million dollar up there included outstanding bill of 4 million. If we didn't account it for that, you're looking at more than 2 million dollars of deficits. So just want to point it out for future considerations of the water enterprise funds.
When you say unaccounted, you know, can you elaborate on that, just so everybody can understand?
The revenue of 17 million dollars, that already accounted for the 3.9 million. It included 3.9 million outstanding bill. That is on an accounting standard requires us to book those because it belongs to the fiscal year 23-24. But it didn't happen, we didn't collect, the 4 million had not been collected June 30.
Why is that?
Those are outstanding bills that in part was due to the water systems outage.
We're going to see an influx this fiscal year as we're collecting with the new system.
Okay.
And we kind of drew up, so you'll see that.
That 4 million?
You're going to see that reflected in this fiscal year, so you're going to see an increase.
Of 4, almost, well, technically, close to 4 million?
Technically, yes.
Above what we should already be?
Correct.
Sorry. Our budget process already started. So the first budget workshop schedules on April 22 at 5:30. I'm inviting everyone to attend. The second budget workshop schedules on May 10 at 9:00 AM. And the third workshop is going to happen in May 22 at 5:30. All of those are going to happen at GVC. So that and my report for tonight. I'm more than happy to take any questions.
And Mayor and council, I just want to thank all of you here on the dais. Presenting a report like this with this type of news is incredible. This doesn't happen in many cities. To get, to not get any findings, to have a clean audit report, but more importantly, to be able to share the excess of funds and where they're at. It's really positive, so thank you for your due diligence and ensuring that we spend our money wisely and that we're, you know, doing what we're supposed to do for our community, so thank you. I say the first budget workshop is a little longer because each department presents on kind of what they're working on, their needs, and their wants. As you get more into the second workshop, we'll start getting more into the numbers, and then into the third workshop, we're starting to refine based on feedback from the community and the council on the budget.
And our CMC team is going to send out a social media blast, so everyone will be invited to the meetings.
Workshop will be in the best month of the year.
And when you send out the social media blasts, can you let them know how long it's going to be too? They should probably know it's going to be at least four to five hours.
5:30 to question mark.
Yeah, you know, just in case people show up and they wonder why it's going so long, and we have three of these.
Yes.
Thank you, Lana.
We'll leave no stone unturned. And Mayor, this is a...
Yeah. I need a motion and a second.
I'll motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next, we have the Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council Consent Calendar. Public financing, we have 16 consent items, numbers six through 21. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'll move six through 21.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next, we have appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Mora.
None tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Martin.
None tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
None tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Protem Zamora.
None tonight.
And I have none. Council comments, AB 1234, council conference reporting. Councilmember Mora.
Last Saturday, I attended the WELL Conference, which is a water education conference for, well, local leaders. And they were quite informative, and it was a couple times where a little bit of a snoozer, but all in all, it was a, well, I got to be honest. But all in all, yeah, you know, water is a definite, definite asset in our state, and this organization works hard to make sure that we have, you know, sustainable water resources. So that was last Saturday. Attended the transportation appreciation today. I don't think our drivers are here today, but it was very well attended, and it was great that we recognized the drivers. Besides being a lifeguard working in the garden and the parking rec, I was also a driver back in the day when we had very old equipment. And I, one quick story, I transported a gentleman on a wheelchair, and I strapped him into that brown bus, and I braked, and the thing snapped, and he was the only one in this 15-passenger bus and had an aisleway. So he rolled all the way down towards me. I saw him approaching me in the mirror. I put my arm out, and I just caught him. And he said, "What happened?" I said, "Nothing, you're fine." And I still got him to where he had a beat. So similar to police officers having all the equipment that they need, you know, transportation also needs a...
We're not liable, right?
Oh, yeah, state-of-the-art equipment, but, and then we know we had, Blanca Pacheco's office presented some certificates for them, so that was great. What else we have here? Well, I've got more, but, that's, the first Friday or first night with that Celtic or Celtic? Celtic, Celtic, that band. Anyway, they were great. I turned up with my wife. It was very well attended, lots of cookies and treats, so that was a lot of fun. But thank you all for being here, and have a great night. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
This past week was Read Across America, so we, I went to a couple schools. It was pretty cool. Some of the books, like my kids are so, like, older that I don't even know some of these books anymore, so it was pretty cool to read them. And it's fun to just watch the kids, how excited they are that there's someone going to their school to read. So that's pretty cool. I do want to announce, thank you, Renee, for reminding me, there's going to be a low-cost pet vaccination clinic for, I take this personal, for older adults over 50. That is me now. It's going to be Thursday, April 10th, yeah, that's what you do to me. Yeah, that's what you do to me. So it's pretty cool. It's gonna be at the GVNC. And it's gonna be like a little carnival, kind of like outdoor event, there'll be vaccines, pet fair, which is pretty good because usually in July, we have our annual one. And that's very, like, it's very overwhelming. And here, it's for seniors. It's slower. It's not as hectic. And it's easier to do. So please, and there's gonna be some giveaways. There's gonna be some, some swag. So since everybody knows I have three little ponies, so.
Three of those together.
And actually, I don't know what this is gonna do to my ponies because this is, my doggies will not. We'll see, they'll have fun with this though. But this, on the wrist. So there's some swag that the city's gonna be passing out. So thank you, Orlean, for heading this off. And there's little flyers and stuff. And some of the vaccines are actually gonna be really inexpensive, which is really good nowadays. And actually, there's gonna be the rabies clinic and also for pet vaccine and the microchip clinic, which is really, really good. We had opening day this week, which was really good. Gus, I don't know if he's here. But really quick how, they said how it was gonna rain, then it wasn't gonna rain. And they moved everything over to the town center hall, which was great. It's actually worked out even better, I think. I don't know, but, because everybody was there, everybody was able to see stuff. So it was really good. And Lee, thank you so much for bringing so much attention to us, being a daughter of a Royal Two Vet. It's, thank you. I bring it to prim, I carry my dad's dog tag every day with me everywhere. And thank you for always, always remembering veterans. So thank you so much. And thank you for our roses too. Now that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I also wanted to say the Little League this past weekend was well-attended. It was great to see all the kids. Even though it rained, it was just so much fun to have all the kids excited to be in our baseball and to participate in because it wasn't gonna happen. We, we didn't have a baseball league, but now we do. And it's full fours. We got some, is it En Fuego? That, they're doing really well. And like, we said, it was well-attended and lots of kids, and they had a great time. After that, we had its pop-up and play. Pop-up and play at Heritage Park. You just go from one thing to the next when you live in Santa Fe Springs. Pop-up and Play Park. We went over there. It was for seven-year-olds and under. Because if anybody knows me, they know that I love children. They're just the most adorable creatures because they're so innocent. And so I go over there to play with the children. And they just had a great time. We got a grant for the library. And where's our librarian? There you are. We got a grant and Oga was there and a couple of other staff members. And they bought some very, very nice magnetics for the kids and just things to play with. And the kids are so creative. And all they want is the attention that we are there to provide for them. So it was a very nice event. We are gonna have more. And I'm so excited. The kids are, is gonna have so much fun. And we have some other things going on at the library. I heard there's gonna be a tea. We're gonna, we were talking about the tea. I also went to the transportation acknowledgement to all our drivers today. And we had a great time there with the drivers. And it was funny that we had this because I read in our newsletter that the, everything that they do for our community, and they should be acknowledged because they do so much. And like I was talking about, the disabled residents, they help them, they put them in, they take them out. They don't do exactly what John did back in the day. Now we have the equipment to help and the hydraulics and everything. But it was just a great event. And I want to thank our, our staff that, our drivers that do all the work for us during, for transportation. I look forward to seeing everybody this Saturday at Chalk It Out. We're gonna have fun again with the kids. And maybe we'll let our seniors do some chalking. Okay? So I want to see everybody there Saturday. And that's all. I just want to wish everybody a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Zamora?
First off, I just want to thank Lee. Thank you for attending and always sharing this amazing information into, you know, our hats and hearts always go out to all of our military veterans, our men and women who, who make a choice to serve this great nation and, you know, to keep us from harm's way where we're just sitting here knowing that, you know, we have freedom of choice. We have freedom of will. So, you know, thank you. We know that we've had veterans and we've had individuals in the past that paid the ultimate price, you know, like the Nakamoras. And, and so we just want to thank you always for your service and just always coming here to, to be a breath of fresh air. I mean, thank you, sir. And I also want to report that my niece today delivered a baby girl, seven pounds, eight, nine ounces. So congratulations to my niece Brianna and, huh? The, the baby? I have to read it. You know, yeah. But it's Brianna and Ben's my nephew. So congratulations to them. But thank you, though, for keeping me accountable, right? Other than that, Read Across America, like Juanita said, it's always an amazing time. And you get to read to kids. I mean, I get to do it more often and, you know, but it's just great when you go in there to read a book and give them some snacks. And I had some great people who, in one of the opportunities where I was in a classroom, I had some really important people show up. I had my mom show up, presented by Juanita. I had Priscilla and city manager, Renee Boadilla, show up. And there was this little boy that, you know, I also attended this talent show. And the same little boy I was telling you guys about, you know, he's just, he was the host, one of the hosts of the talent show. His name is Tanner. And oh my gosh, every time he introduced the act, I think there was about maybe 30 acts that they had at this elementary school. And afterwards, he always like cheered, like he would, you know, he always, like he would say their name and he'd be woo! And it was just funny because he had his coat on. He was real professional. And, and it's funny because throughout his act, he decided to yell out Tanner for mayor. He's, he's all right, Mr. Zamora. I'm like, yeah, Tanner for mayor. So if you meet this kid, he's the cutest kid. So it was great to see these kids just going out there with that moxie that, you know, that, you know, that character of performing live in front of, you know, a field auditorium where, I mean, I don't know if I could do that. I mean, back in the days, but I think it's just different times. And these kids are just, just have that, have it where, where I don't have it. So, you know, but I just want to thank them. They were amazing performances. When we showed up to the, you know, when we talk about baseball and we talk about our Little League, it was ups, you know, ups and downs where the fields were being drained because we had a, an amount of rain that was coming in. So to our ball field crew, Mr. Manuel Cantu and all of them who were doing all the work, trying to, trying to clean the fields for us. But then it was, it was, you know, it was moved because, you know, here they're, here we're doing all this work on our fields. And to jeopardize the fields by everybody trampling all over them while it's muddy, you know, of course, I'm glad they made the decision. So kudos to everybody. Odalis president and, you know, Renee and staff, Gus, whoever may be that decided to move it over here. I think it was, I'm glad they did. It was great, well-attended. Mr. Rounds threw an amazing pitch, you know? And he desired, he decided to retire the, actually the Los Angeles, not the Dodgers because they already have great pitching, but the LA Angels, since we can't find anybody. They called him Mr. Rounds, but he denied it. He said it was just one pitch. Instead of one hitter quitter, it's a one-pitch wonder. One-pitch wonder. So if he would've threw it a little high, it would've hit people in the stands. If he would've threw it left, he would've hit people there.
Hit it to the right, it would've hit council members?
Yeah, so he threw a, he threw a great pitch. So other than that, I mean, we had a great time and, you know, and I just want to thank everybody, all of our city staff and our residents who continue to be amazing. And, you know, may God always bless this wonderful city. And may God always bless this amazing country that we live in. Take care and have a good night.
Thank you, council, for your comments. And once again, thank you to the audience, all the residents, staff, police department, everybody for being here tonight, being part of your city. This is your city. And we sit up here and represent you, but you're the ones that make it happen. So thank you for that. Yeah, we're in the season now. A lot of stuff's gonna be happening, a lot of events. It's gonna be a great, great year, all the way here and through December, pretty much now. So rest up and get your sunscreen out. It's gonna be a little warm here in a couple days. And Lee, thanks you again. I'm gonna place this in my office, right at the front, where whoever walks in, they'll have to see this first. So appreciate that. So God bless everyone. Have a great weekend and we are adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, do you want to report out our San Francisco trip?
Sure. So as you all know, we have Measure SFS. And we're gonna generate a little over $6 million a year. Well, if we only use that $6 million a year, our roads aren't gonna get fixed very quickly, right? So we went up to San Francisco. We had a number of us from the city representing the city to try to get a $30 million bond. I've never participated in anything like this, but it was amazing. Went in and first thing I noticed, we met with two representatives from the Moody. They're a big company. And they were half the age of all of us.